Time being five fifteen, I'll call this commissioner's meeting order. Commissioner Hodges, would you kind of give us some pledge of allegiance?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Onto our minutes. Is there a discussion or a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Onto discussion of our calendar. Is there any discussion and questions? Nor do I. Then we'll move on to previously signed documents.
Nothing.
Who will be presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, looks like we have a department update. Sheriff's Department Tower Lease Amendment.
Can we move to the nursing home first?
Sure.
You got it.
Sorry, Shelley, we're out of order.
Hi, Shelley.
Hi, hi.
Apologies. How are you doing?
Uh, good, how about you? Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to Richard Colley, RJ. He is our Environmental Service Director. Um, he replaced Phil Dino when he retired. So he's been with us for since, what, September of last year? Of last year.
Nice to finally meet you.
Welcome, welcome.
So.
Nice to be here.
Um, in front of you, we have, um, the request for proposal for the grease traps in the nursing home. We had put out and we received two, um, proposals.
Okay.
Uh, you can see there A L L C Mechanical eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty and the other one K P M B twenty thousand four hundred and sixty. Um, we are recommended going with A L L C. Um, we have done work with them. They've worked on the backflow, the water backflow and.
New boiler pump.
Boiler pump. Um, and we've had good working relationship with them. So, um, we'd like to offer, award them the bid if it's okay with you guys.
Excellent. RJ, a couple of questions.
Sure.
The existing grease traps, are they functional in any way?
Um, not at all.
Okay. And do we know how long they have been inoperable?
I do not know that. Um, the one I know specifically in the storage room, you can see dirt. It's completely rotted out. So it's of no use at all.
Yeah. Follow up, do you, any idea of the vintage of the grease trap? Are they thirty, forty years old, maybe older?
At least, at least thirty years old.
Didn't the failure of those deposit back up and we had to pay city to come clean it out?
Yes, on a Saturday night.
So if we could put the windows down, we shouldn't have to do that again?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, budget amount for this project?
Um, we had put in twenty thousand in the building improvement line. Um, and the pricing that we have is eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty for both of them.
I make a motion that we award this bid to A L C's, A L L C Mechanical for eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Shelley.
Um, the second request is for the condensers in the walk-in freezer and the walk-in coolers. We need to replace three of them. So we need to put an R F P out and we received two bids. Um, and we have them identified here K P, K P M B eighty-one thousand six hundred and ten dollars and then Wicked Cool Mechanical thirty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five. Um, we did get an original quote, verbal quote, um, a while ago when we were preparing the budget and it was for, um, I think thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So in the budget, we put thirty-one thousand five hundred. So the thirty-seven is a little bit above what we had budgeted for. But we do have in that building improvement line ninety thousand dollars was allotted in there. And, um, with what we have in there to be done when we did the walk around with the delegation, um, executive council, I think it ends up being seventy-four thousand and then there was some money left over to do other projects as we seemed deemed necessary to come up with. So we will have a little bit of money in there for the overage of that.
Enough to cover the overage? Okay.
Yeah, uh, to cover the thirty-seven because we had put in thirty-one five.
Right. Okay. RJ, do we know why there is such a wide discrepancy between the two bidders?
Um, so K P M B did include, uh, electrical in there specifically wrote it out. I wouldn't think that's a major part of it. But other than that, they're very similar equipment wise and I'm not sure why it's, it's so large to deal with.
Are there, are you saying that we'll have to bring in an electrical contractor if we go through lower bid for an additional cost?
Um, it would be very minor if we did, is what I'm told. Uh, possibly replacing a disconnect, um, but not more than that.
And, and who advised you on that it would be minimal cost?
Uh, that was, um, Wicked Cool Mechanical.
Okay.
That, that is a huge difference.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with the quality, the equipment that they're proposing as opposed to the other people?
Um, yeah, I would be comfortable with it. Um, Wicked Cool has done, you know, a good amount of stuff for the county as well, you know, for John Bossy and um, I, I really wish I could speak to why there's such a big price difference, but yeah.
Yeah. Did you have any chance to have a conversation with John as to Wicked Cool's recommendation of minimal electrical contracting? Was he part of the discussion at all or?
Uh, no, he was not.
The other thing I was wondering, we, we, we've talked about this, is what we have to do to, um, store? If, if, um, the refrigeration and the freezer are down, do we have to get a portable cooler or what do we do? Do they, um, hook up the lines and the condensers and everything and then switch them over just at that time? Or how does that work?
So did Wicked Cool say how long you'd be without refrigeration service?
Uh, they did not specify. Um, in their proposal, uh, they did write down the county will need to make arrangements for food storage. Um, as the boxes will be down actually for a few days. So.
So when you proposed to do this, when would they start?
We have to talk to them. Um, if, if they get awarded the bid, we have to find out when they're available to do it and what we, what it would entail.
How far the equipment out is and coordinated with dining.
So they have to disable the old system and shut down cooling for three or four days?
That's correct.
So.
So we don't know what the total prod, total cost of this project's gonna be. It's certainly gonna be more than thirty-seven thousand dollars.
It will be.
And we only have budgeted thirty-one, so.
Sorry, um, it will be if we do have to rent some type of, uh, mobile storage cooler. Yes.
And is there any way we wouldn't have to rent a mobile storage cooler?
I was gonna talk to John from Wicked Cool to see if they could run the new line sets ahead of time. Um, that would buy us some time. I don't know if it would buy us enough time.
So we have a couple of issues. There's quite a food inventory in there and we can't risk spoilage. So we need to know what our options are to preserve what's in inventory while the transition takes place. The other issue that Commissioner Waring mentioned is we don't know the additional cost, even an estimate, of the electrical service. So I think the board might wanna know how much we're on the hook for that's not included in the lower bid for electrical services. I'm sure it's not forty thousand dollars.
Right.
Commissioner Waring.
Do we know if, if K P M B in their proposal has allotted for temporary storage?
They did not, no.
Okay.
I, I could imagine temporary storage might cost a few hundred dollars a day. I mean, I don't know, but it won't be cheap.
Yeah.
Um, could we get a estimate on how many days and, and find out how much it's gonna cost? We have to do it, that, that.
Right, right, uh, cause I.
So we need to know what it's gonna cost.
Right, I was thinking, um, where we have the two walk-ins, can it be one walk-in handle the amount of stuff from either one, plus all the other refrigerators that we have? Then freezer, we've got, um, a cooler, a freezer, like a lift-up chest. And then we just purchased two more freezers.
Two uprights.
Two, yeah, up, uprights. How much more room would we have to disperse stuff?
Okay.
You know?
Yeah. Are those uprights full right now?
No, they only have ice cream.
Yeah, they, yeah, there's just ice cream.
Yeah.
So there's capacity?
Yeah.
If we approve, there's no difference in preserving the food from either bid, either company. So food storage is not included with either bid, that takes that off the table. The material difference I see, if we're talking apples to apples on equipment and quality of installation, is really, uh, just the cost to bring in, to put in the service disconnect. Um, if it's one service disconnect, it's not gonna be an enormous amount of money by any means. So commissioners, the options are to wait and get a little more information on that number or to go ahead and approve and be advised later as to what the cost is.
Is it, is there any, we're. Is there any reason we couldn't wait till we get the cost or it just need to be done immediately for a reason?
We, we could probably, um, talk to the electrician that we use to see and we could talk to Wicked Cool and see what they thought. And have them physically look at like the freezer area, would there be enough for storage? How many days do they really think it would be down? Can they do it, um, aside of the other areas and then just hook it up?
Yeah, and we know.
Okay, so.
And then we, we could, um, come back once next meeting, the twenty-ninth.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you can get us a, a rough estimate within a few hundred dollars of the electrical work and then a rough estimate on the cost of having to relocate the food on a temporary basis. Because as Commissioner Waring says, you know, this is a finite line item and for some reason there are additional expenses and we know there are some expenses in addition to the thirty-seven thousand. You know, commissioners will need to know that we need to move money elsewhere to, to cover that deficit, should there be one. Does that make sense, Shelley? Okay, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you have a donation you wanted to?
Was there a donation, Shelley?
Oh, there is.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, here it is.
Oh, okay. And we, we have a donation, um, from Edith and Tom Tardif in memory of, um, resident Priscilla Flavette in the amount of fifty dollars to go into the resident council trust fund.
Move approval? Your acceptance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, Shelley.
Good evening, sorry for my tardiness.
Sheriff, how are you?
I was actually, I was actually on the phone with our, uh, power, power personnel.
You want your stock?
Yes.
You're in summer uniforms, we're getting too few to snow tonight.
It's amazing.
You need to go change and come back.
I got a jacket, trust me.
All right.
Um, but, uh, I know that Shelley's happy that she got the win before me because she, she. Um, but I'm here to do, uh, the department's, uh, update. It's been, uh, since December, since I sat before you to give an update, even though that it seems like I'm here every meeting and I give you an update, but, um, ultimately, uh, our staffing right now is, we're, we're still a full staff. We do have one dispatcher spot that, uh, came open last month and since then we've, uh, hired somebody so they actually start, um, I believe it's next week. But for the, uh, admin clerks, the deputy sheriff's dispatchers, uh, per diem bailiffs, we're, we're really, uh, good where we're at. Uh, we continue to recruit for part-time personnel. And again, it's not a critical thing, it's just a nicety, uh, for when we do have vacations or sick, sick time or what have you. Or, or the, what's the generic need for it. Right now we have a total of forty-eight employees that are currently on our roster as, uh, sheriff's employees. And, uh, we continue to be one of the few that staffed and, uh, keeping our wheels, uh, turned at that full staff level. So I'm pretty happy about that. Um, the budget is, uh, it's a little bit more spent than, uh, when I drafted this letter, which was last week. I believe we're at twenty-three percent now. Um, but everything seems to be pretty much in line, uh, as it relates to budgetary processes. Uh, there are a couple of areas that I'm, I'm paying attention to. Um, detail line is of course one of them. Uh, but, uh, I'll come before you on the twenty-ninth to discuss that, uh, a little more in depth, uh, as well as all the numbers and everything. So, uh, we're spending a lot, uh, we're working a lot, uh, but we're also collecting a lot, so it's, it's positive there. Um, right now we still have, uh, several projects that we're working on. Uh, the radio tower project, again, that was part of my tardiness, was, uh, on the phone with our tower company trying to continue to, to, uh, manage those, um, contacts with, with the actual tower owners, trying to get, uh, good contracts. Uh, but, uh, everything seems to be, uh, right on target and we're still moving forward. Uh, we're trying to get, uh, July, um, cut over date, that's kind of the plan. But again, it's, it's, uh, contracts and things, um, we just don't wanna keep coming before you and, and, uh, you know, have a contract that's overinflated and stuff just because we're trying to get it done. So we're, we're taking our time to do it right. Uh, we still are working on the IMC consolidation project, which, um, that's tying in all the local departments that we dispatch for, uh, either all the time or some of the time, uh, with the, uh, infrastructure to be able to run our leverage management system and our dispatch system. Uh, right now the core infrastructure and software is in place. Uh, technically we could, if I was to ask the, the, uh, intrasystems to put the icons on the desktops of the local PDs, they could technically sign in and, and, uh, we'd be operational right now, but there is a training component to it. So, uh, we've been doing a series of trainings. The trainings traditionally last, uh, six to seven hours and, uh, they're going through and setting up, uh, how the databases should be all set up. Cause there is still some conversion stuff that we have to do in order for everything to line up, uh, before they plop the thumb drive in and, and, uh, upload and download and all that stuff. So, uh, we're still working on that and that's gonna continue through the month of April. Um, they're hoping that it'll be done the last week of April into the first week of May. Uh, we're hoping that the, the live access and the usage of it will actually happen, uh, the first of May. The tackle operations center, which is our, um, the, the vehicle that we have rebuilt, uh, the final contract language, uh, was reviewed, it was, uh, um, county administrator sent it back and said everything looks good. Uh, so that's been signed and, and ready to go. Uh, we purchased, um, plane tickets for the ride back. Uh, myself and the chief deputy are leaving on a Saturday, uh, early morning. We're driving through Saturday and Sunday, uh, to deliver it and, uh, on Monday, actually it'll be delivered on Monday because it's a twenty-nine hour trip. So we'll do two fourteen and a half hour days, um, get that thing down to Texas and then, uh, so we'll, we'll be driving Monday, Tuesday, uh, it'll be delivered, it will be flying back. So, uh, the goal is to, um, get that down there and back in short order. And of course we won't be gone long, so, so I think that's a positive thing. Um, but that's going down in the middle of the month. So we'll, we'll have that down and it'll be out of commission for a couple of months, but when it comes back it'll be like a brand new vehicle. So our productivity, um, the deputies, the dispatchers, the admin staff, uh, they continue to be, uh, super resourceful and super busy. Um, it's almost like I can't keep these people busy enough, they're just, uh, they just keep going. We had three hundred and eighty-seven new civil documents processed, uh, with five hundred and twenty-seven of them. Three, yeah, five hundred and twenty-seven of them had actually been attempted to be served, uh, or worseer. Uh, we've had three hundred and fifty-seven, uh, transports that were completed. We've had three extraditions, nine geomedical transports, which included us to actually have to sit at the hospital. We've had fifteen IEA transports, um, a hundred and twenty arrests, which, uh, again, they continue to arrest people at a rate of like three a day. So when I generated this, so I know it's a little bit higher now, because they, again, they just keep arresting people. Uh, we've had over two hundred and eighty-one motor vehicle stops and fifty-three investigative reports. Uh, communications division, they've actually handled, so dispatch, they've actually handled over eighty-eight hundred calls already, already this year. And the court, court division, they, uh, right now, because of everything that's going on in the basement of the courthouse that could be rebuilt, uh, they've been a little bit displaced, but, um, but they're managing the prisoner hole and all that, uh, on the court, the actual court level of the courthouse. So, um, they've been managing that just well. The, uh, new keyless entry system is up and running in our building here and also down in the, uh, courthouse and it's been running, uh, great. And, and my administrative, uh, assistant, uh, she helps set up everything and group everything and get each individual, uh, set up. It, so it's been great and she's been super busy with that. Um, we're super happy with the way it, it worked out, it really is a very nice thing. And, um, all of our court personnel have attended the A O C training. So the administrative office of the courts, uh, put on a two-week, uh, two-week training course and, um, for the first time, uh, in quite a long time, every single person that works down there as a bailiff has gone through the training. So even if they're, uh, normally if they're a deputy sheriff, we would say, well, they're, they're kind of overqualified for that, that, uh, course, but we found that there is some good parts in there that has to do specifically with court process and things that we found beneficial, so we made sure that all of our personnel have actually attended that training. And, uh, again, it costs us nothing but the salaries that we pay them. So we continue to do everything that's, uh, including RSA one oh four and five and RSA one oh four six. Uh, we also are continuing to provide support services to the local agencies, uh, as they need it. There's been a couple of towns that have asked us, uh, to cover their council patrol for a day, uh, because they have department training, uh, and they, they basically turn the keys over to their towns and, uh, we provide that function for them and it's been a very beneficial thing for them and for us. Uh, you know, our personnel do like to get up into these towns and, uh, be a participative member, so it's been very positive. We continue to have, uh, really good support, uh, from our community. Again, uh, a lady had stopped into the office just yesterday and I dropped off, you know, a, a big thing of bananas and, and, uh, oranges and, and apples and cookies and stuff, you know, just to say thank you and, uh, uh, we really do appreciate, uh, the community. And that's pretty much it as, uh, a quick, down and dirty of what we're doing and how we're doing it. Uh, do you have any questions in relation to the operations of the agency or, or what we're doing, how we're doing it?
Well, all the agencies that we dispatch for, be hooking into the IMC?
Yes, so they're either hooking in fully integrated or partially. And the partially is more like, uh, so we have three communities, only one of them that we dispatch for part-time, that's Meredith. Meredith is doing the aware as well as Guilford and, uh, Laconian. So they will see our, our calls populate on their screen, kind of like a, a box. They'll be able to see what's going on in the county, but they just won't be able to interact with that call. So if we are in Meredith and we're serving an eviction and we start calling for help, um, they won't be able to click into the call and add it to their call or anything, they can just view where we're at. And, and our dispatchers are live importing data. So to continue to populate, they'll be able to see what's going on and what, what our dispatch is doing or what we're asking for, uh, while they're getting their units responding. The departments that we, that have come on board fully integrated, they will actually have access to our CAD system, our record system. Um, everything is integrated, so technically I could evacuate our side of the building and, uh, a Tilton, Tilton Police Department could in essence take over all the call volume for Bellknap County. So it's an interactive, uh, process in that, uh, you know, provided we give the, the amount of rights out to everyone, uh, it's, it's a seamless, uh, effortless process, uh, for us to be able to, to have redundancy. And that's exactly what we were trying to build in this process.
We dispatched him from Meredith midnight eight?
Uh, I, yes, I believe it's midnight eight, yes.
And they're not coming on full?
No, no, they, um, when I talked to Chief Harper about it, uh, his idea was he eventually wants to go to a, a model like Guilford has where it's a twenty-four seven, uh, dispatch facility and that he felt that it was gonna go kind of the wrong direction if he was to integrate with us fully like that. So I, again, I'm, I'm not a salesman, I, I can only offer the service and, and, uh, you know, uh, put forward a good effort to say I, I think that consolidation is a far better, uh, uh, product. But, um, again, I can only encourage it.
Thank you.
Uh, Phil, just a couple of things. Um, you're looking to recruit part-time dispatchers. See, we called a year and a half, two years ago. It was a little bit of a struggle, adequately staffing dispatch, but that's ironed itself out.
It sure has, yep.
Are you actually short or are you just looking to build down?
So we don't have like a total number for how many dispatchers we need on the roster. What we look at is what, what do we have for relief and, and who's able to provide, uh, some help? We had a, a list of dispatchers that hadn't worked in over a year, uh, which I consider that abandoning the job. Um, so those employees were basically informed that, uh, you're no longer, your service is no longer needed because you're not servicing anything. Uh, they were just on the roster. So, uh, as we continue to build our systems out, we want our people to be, um, familiar with what we're doing and how we're doing it. And, uh, just having people on our roster is not a good thing. So we're actually actively looking for people who want to work part-time and that can fulfill a couple shifts a month, uh, if not more, depending on the needs. So, um, and we do, what we, what I found is when we do put a job process out there, we're getting, uh, quite a few applications now where in the past it was kind of spotty. So we get, you know, two or three, now we're getting twenty and, and they just keep rolling in. And again, it's an ongoing process, so we don't, for full-time, once with the full-time spots become filled, which is eight full-time positions, um, we stop advertising for that and then we try to focus on our, uh, part-time pool. And again, I'd rather have two people in the part-time pool that actually work than to have fourteen that don't, that don't come in and are more of a liability, uh, to our processes, so. than to have fourteen that don't, that don't come in and are more of a liability, uh, to our processes, so.
Uh, follow-up, so you're fully staffed?
Yes.
Uh, and you mentioned that other organizations are not, for example, LPD. Is short-handed, are they not? And if so, why is LPD short-handed? Why are you fully staffed? What, what should they be doing?
I mean, so when it comes to deputies, you know, I mean, for us, a, a lot of it, like, I mean, I came here in oh-five, and part of that was quality of life and opportunity. So, uh, quality of life is, we predominantly work Monday through Friday, uh, day shift or day-evening variation, but predominantly Monday through Friday. Um, that's very attractive. Our work product is also a little different, so, um, the expectations is, is that we need to serve warrants, we need to do transports, um, and then so put the local agencies, we're not out catching dog calls or, or domestics, uh, unless we're in the area and we're, we're available to help, so, um, so we, we have a quality of life, uh, process here. Um, our benefits are good, and the pay is not too bad. Um, now, I also have to stay competitive, so, and you'll hear more about that on the twenty-ninth, when I start talking about details and, and funding and stuff, um, where, where we have ability to, to be able to work some extra details, or renew things that are not of normal, um, patrol-related things that are, that are subject to just a town. Uh, it's very lucrative for us to, to come here and work as a county, because our, our, um, area is, is a lot bigger, and we get to travel around and be part of other things, uh, where we're not just confined to that one little geographical area. So those are some of the things that I, I looked at when I came here, and other things that employees that we have working now are talking about, is that they're interested in what we do and how we do it. The bike patrol thing is a huge buzz, we just picked up the bicycles this morning, um, they're sitting in our, our garage next door, and, um, you know, we ordered the uniforms earlier this week, they came in, so that those who are going to be designated to do some of the bicycle patrol, they're super pumped about it. Um, you know, those are little things that we have that, that really improve our processes here. Uh, we're not trying to necessarily fill shifts because we have, we have personnel, so the struggles are a little different. As it relates to dispatch, well, uh, we're a county facility, um, I most certainly don't want to compete with any of the local jurisdictions, they don't do what our people do. Again, I've said this before, where they're dispatching for three people, ours are dispatching for third. Uh, their area is far bigger, and, and they're doing far more work than any one of these local jurisdictions. So we pay them better, uh, we're giving them, uh, the opportunity to work, uh, different hours, so they're working, uh, right now, their, their schedule is four ten-hour shifts with three days off. Um, that's a very good thing for them, and they rotate their shifts every, every two months. So, uh, you know, they'll be on two months of midnights, two months of days, two months of evenings, two months of splits, and, uh, and they rotate through that, so they like that. We also offer a shift differential where other departments may not. Um, again, we're not offering these people big bonuses and, uh, and all that, as you're seeing, you know, from these other departments. Um, what we do have is, we have long-term stability, um, that we're trying to advocate for, and that we're trying to encourage them, we give them trainings and all that, they, uh, right now, they like it where they work, so I, I find that to be very beneficial, and the statistical data supports the work that they're doing, and the community of response is, uh, is showing that we're actually doing what we're supposed to be doing, working for people. It's really good.
Very good, thank you, uh.
And the only thing I would add to that is, from my past experience, dispatch is a tremendous economy of scale. And we have eighty-four dispatchers in the county doing the job for not seven towns, and we don't have eight dispatchers in each town. And we're not reduplicating the equipment in each town. So there is a, just a huge economy of scale. Probably give that service to the towns for twenty-five percent of what it costs them, you know, individually to do it. Um, and you get a lot more back for your buck.
We have, we have some towns right now that go to, that, that actually go on call, you know, at two AM or at midnight, and, and it's, it's been something that's, um, that's kind of shocking, because crime hasn't stopped, and crime hasn't slowed, the statistical data is starting to show that it's lower in crime. It's because we don't have police officers out on the street doing progressive work. So, um, it, it, it's a, it's a problem, um. And again, that's where I'm trying to get my personnel to, to help the local towns and get out there and basically turn the wheels, there's no reason to be in the office unless they're getting a coffee, or they're, you know, they return paperwork or something, like they're, they're constantly moving, and, uh, and I have a really great crew that's just, they're just out there doing what they're, what they're, what I'm asking them to do. They're enthusiastic and they, they're really doing a great job, so I can't, I can't really be any happier, honestly.
Good to hear.
It's really good.
Is, uh, Deborah, there's, uh, what about the Tower Amendment, is that something you need to discuss, or?
Yes, yep, so we can talk about the Tower. Um, so this power is still in conversation, um, as to, for our, our tower company, that's, that's, um, that's going to be paying for the installation of some of the equipment and things that are on there, but at this point, um, I'm asking for the approval as long as, uh, two-way communications can secure the building process, um, in the way that we want to. The fees that are associated with the Tower is, um, acceptable to me, and we've worked on it, uh, quite a bit. I did send the county administrator the, um, the contract ahead of time, so she could review it, instead of coming up before you and doing kind of opposite of what we did last time. So, um, again, I don't see anything that's real negative in here, other than, I mean, I really don't want to be paying, uh, I think this was the sixteen hundred and seventy-two dollars a month, I really want it to be lower than that, but, uh, we're at kind of a crossroad where I, I'm not able to get them, uh, to go down any more than what it is. And currently, in my, uh, budget, I can support the, the difference in that. I was, I budgeted for fifteen hundred, uh, each tower site, so there's been a couple that are coming a little lower, and a couple that are coming a little higher, so it's kind of equaling out.
Need for this amendment and increase in price, is what's happening on them?
So, so right now, this particular power, we have, um, the equipment that is on the side of this one, yeah, all. So this is project, so that tower, right now, uh, we have one antenna that's stuck to the side of a, a, um, shed at the, at the top of the mountain. So we have some elevation, but we're not on the tower, we're not where we really need to be. Now, Alton, Gilmington, and Barnstead have always had some problematic areas, uh, with communications, uh, whether it's mostly them talking to us versus us talking to them. Now, we transmit at, I believe it's right around a hundred watts from that site, where portable radios are about five to seven watts. So them calling into us is far less. Um, so that, again, with the tower, uh, project that we have going, I said, I want all the problems fixed. For one point eight billion dollars, where do we need to be on the towers to get this, um, problem fixed, once and for all? So they said, you need to be at at least a hundred-foot mark on the tower. So I believe that the tower that they're looking at, or right now, the spot is about a hundred and twenty feet on the tower, so it's a prime spot for us to where we need to be in order to cover all those areas with all the problems that we've had in the past. This should be the solution to everything. Now, that's according to their propagation models, so, uh, Motorola has their own processes on what they can say, you know, broadcasting out and receiving in, at, as to what it would be for, um, coverage. In back, if you remember when they came in and did their, um, slide, slideshow, it showed like the whole county was red, uh, for talking out, and the whole county was red for talking in. That means that's like perfect coverage, ninety-eight percent coverage, ninety-eight percent of the time is like the standard of what we're trying to get to. Um, so that's ultimately, uh, what this will do at this tower, is to put us up on the tower and, and actually correct all those issues that are down there right now. But it comes at a price, so it's a significant price. And we're putting up two antennas, so everything's duplicated. So because we have two, um, if you will, prime channels, we have primary channel one, which is the one that dispatches on all the time. Channel two is a, is a, uh, it's exactly similar to channel one, which is a simulcast channel, which means it broadcasts from all tower tops, and it listens from all tower tops. So it's, so channel one and channel two are just as good as each other. Channel two is a operational channel, so if we have a major incident go on in Alton, the services in Santa Harbor should never be affected by that. We can transfer, um, Alton to channel two, and we can keep Santa Harbor on channel one, and we can continue operations. And because we have two dispatchers that predominantly work their shifts, you can actually split dispatch, and they can dispatch for both sectors. Um, so that's the ideology behind it, and we, in this world of, uh, emergency management, we always want duplication of everything, we call it redundancy. So channel one and channel two, exactly the same, but they're not the same channels, different frequencies, but, um, but they operate the same, so there's no pickup on that. And then we have a third channel, which is a, it's a, um, it's a conventional simplex, simplex channel, which means it doesn't go through a repeater, it doesn't, it's like antenna to antenna. So my portable to your portable, like, and it talks, there's no delay, no anything, but it's very short. So we talk normally within a mile, and if you have a tree in the way, it's less than that, so, um, that's more like your traffic accidents, where they're trying to direct traffic, you know, it's a blue car, let everybody go, that thing, so. I can go further if you want, how much time you got?
So we need a motion to approve the question of the third amendment?
Sure moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And again, we won't, uh, go into contract until they can solidify the, the bill costs, just to, just to make sure that's all good.
Very good.
Is there anything else that?
No. We appreciate your thoroughness.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Okay, commissioners, Deborah, do we have other business? Do we have any public comments? I see a young lady back there, nodding up and down, but, oh, I'm sorry, you're going left to right, I forget. It was the distance, Shelley.
Little tidbit to the nursing home. So since we, um, increased our registry rates, um, we've had five new staff that we're onboarding.
Great, bravo. That's a nice score.
They're going to love it, they're going to end up wanting to come full-time.
Good. Excellent, nice jackpot.
So, yeah, we're, we're excited.
I blame you. We're excited too.
There's something else too, all this gear that you see in the screen, so we're doing user support strain in here, we, we teamed up with Primex, uh, to do some, uh, user force training and all that, and they, uh, they've come up, they're up here for, I think it's, uh, a week, maybe a little bit longer, is it just one week, okay. So they're up here for the entire week, we put it out to the entire county to invite other, other officers in here as well, uh, but basically, it's a big video game with, uh, realistic-style firearms, and they shoot kind of, you know, they feel the same and all that, it's all CO2 cartridge and all that, but they run through scenarios and as we're interacting with the screen, they can hit certain buttons and make it react differently or say different things. Um, so again, it was free training, and, uh, and it's, it's been pretty cool to, to see everything react, and I have received, uh, a lot of positive feedback about the quality of people that we have working for us. So, uh, you know, they're talking about, you know, user force is probably one of the biggest things, um, that, that are questioned in our job, and, uh, and also one of the biggest things that we pay out for, right? And, and I'm getting awesome feedback about how our people respond to these things, uh, which is super positive, so. That's why all this equipment and gear is here.
Thank you for the explanation. Okay, seeing no public, additional public comments, uh, is there a motion to go into non-public?
A roll call vote you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, um, to go into non-public session in accordance with ninety-one A colon three, paragraph two, sub-paragraph A. Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?